Yes.
Good evening. It is five thirty PM on Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission. Is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Vice Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Commissioners Blake Camp, Luke Ommitt, Ben McGrann, Amelia Boyd, and Nick Pulito. Commissioner Hastings is absent. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a flag of the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a quick announcement about the sound system here in chambers. Staff recently performed a complete review and testing of our system with our AV provider. And we're in the process of replacing the microphones used by the staff at the tables here up front. In the meantime, to prevent feedback, some of the speakers in the ceiling in the middle of the room are not turned up quite as loud as those in the front of the room or in the back. We have increased the volume in the speakers in the back of the room. So if you're finding it difficult to hear the meeting, consider sitting in the back row where the speakers are turned up. As I mentioned, this is a temporary issue that will be addressed in the coming months. Additionally, we would also like to make you aware that assisted listening devices are available in council chambers to check out and use during public meetings. Staff has used them and they work really well. They are simple to use and you can control the volume on the device. They make it really easy to hear all that is being said through all of the microphones. If you'd like to try one out, please see the meeting clerk right here. Are there any other general announcements from the Commissioners or from city staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment if I may. I just wanted to tell you, Amy, how appreciative it was to get all of that reading material weeks in advance. So appreciate the hard work that your staff did to put that together for us. So thank you.
Any other announcements? Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Will now take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two special meeting.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on a three-part request for approval of a rezoning, final plat- plan, final development plan, and amended preliminary plat for a two hundred and twenty-seven dwelling unit planned unit development. The subject property, RPS three-nine-three-six-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two, Adam, Adam, is approximately fourteen point five acres located in the east, located to the east of intersection of the intersection of Ebbett Way and North Boyer, west of Sand Creek, north of the railroad tracks, and south of Moscow Street in the University Place subdivision phase two A. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The order of the procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. One, explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Two, presentation by applicant. Please note that Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at this time, at that time. Three, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Questions should be asked of those testifying at that time. The order for those of providing testimony will be as follows: in favor, neutral, and opposed. Number four, applicant's rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Five, closing of the public hearing. And finally, six, Commissioners will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. Before we recruit, excuse me, before we proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each Commissioner, please, that you have no ex parte contact and have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request.
I have none.
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 Thank you. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweaton for an introduction of this request and explanation of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is a public hearing on three separate cases, which include a rezon, a PUD final development plan, and amended preliminary plans. University Place preliminary plan was approved in two thousand twenty, and that included four phases. Pursuant to the original development agreement, phase four was anticipated to come forward with request to rezon from the existing RS single residential, single family to a district more consistent with the comprehensive plan land use map. The University Place base for request again includes the three actions, a rezoning from the single family to multiple family, a PUD that has a combined preliminary and final development plan, and an amended preliminary plat. The action by the Commission on all three requests will be a recommendation to City Council. The first request is for the property rezoning. A property rezoning must be in accordance with comprehensive plan and be bound to not place undue burden on public services. The request is to rezon the entire property from RS residential, single family to RM residential, multiple family. The property is within three future land use context areas of comprehensive plan, CA three, three B, and four, all of which allow a mix of housing units while also encouraging. The applicant provided a detailed review of the rezon request consistency with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. To summarize, the following are relevant to review of the request. Goal H one, housing variety, provide a variety of housing types across income levels in Sandpoint. Encourage diversity is the goal with numerous objectives that I will not read. The second is goal is H three, new neighborhoods. I'm sure that new neighborhoods provide the same charm and comfort of Sandpoint's historic neighborhoods. Goal T one, transportation walkability, make Sandpoint a walkable community. Goal R one, parks, provide integrated and comprehensive parks and recreation facilities to serve Sandpoint's needs. And goal are for recreation, support recreation as an important component of Sandpoint community life. The PUD request is allowed pursuant to section ten-three-one of the city code. A planned unit development is development of land in which the standard land use regulations may be modified or waived in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of land in conformance with an approved planned unit development permit, which accentuates usable open space, recreational uses, public amenities, community housing, and harmonious development with surrounding properties and the city at large. And to the right is the combined preliminary and final development plan. Again, this is a combined request. It will not go through the two-stage approval process that the last PUD that came before you went through. This, this is a combined application. The final development plan provides two hundred and twenty-seven dwellings in a mix of single-family attached townhouse and duplex lots and four multi-family structures of twenty-eight units each. At the south end, townhouses are in the northwest corner, and the duplex are along the east property line. The cemental included proposed elevations, floor plans, and overall landscaping. And the dwellings are accessed from Herring Avenue and Ebbett Way as well as a local street through the townhomes, and then the purely local drives accessing the individual townhomes. The development is anticipated to be completed in four phases over a five-year period, starting with phase four A will be the duplexes and the first phase of townhomes, moving over to the first to multi-family structures, finishing the multi-family structures, and then moving into the townhomes. The PUD zoning standards, the proposed PUD zoning standards include numerous deviations from the RM district standards that are summarized in table one and two of the staff report in two general categories of design standards and dimensional requirements. The requested design standards for the duplexes and townhomes include more than fifty percent of the front wall of the structures being the garage area, and then also units without street-facing entrances. The drawing to the right here, you'll see the entrances are actually on the sides of the building rather than facing the street. On the multiple family buildings, the requested waivers are from the requirements of nine-four-two-three-H, which are additional standards applicable to multi-family structures to improve the appearance, quality, and functions of multi-family housing. The requested dimensional standard deviations include building heights of forty-five feet for the townhomes and forty-eight feet for the multi-family buildings. Again, in the multiple family district, the height limit is forty feet. So those are the deviations, proposed deviations. With the townhouse lots, the deviations include reduced minimum lot sizes and widths, reduced front side and rear yard setbacks, and increased overall impervious area of the lots, as well as the exterior boundary reduction from the twenty-five-foot exterior boundary setback for certain portions of the overall project. And then, and finally, the development has, is showing significantly more parking than the zoning code requires. Regarding the required open space, the PUD requirement for common open space is a minimum ten percent of the development gross area, which is fourteen point five acres. The four area, the four areas identified in the open space map are just short of the ten percent requirement, but there is sufficient area currently shown as parking to expand and improve the open spaces. The open spaces will not be dedicated to the public but maintained by the homeowners association. An overview of the proposed open spaces to the north is the linear, linear park. To the south of that is the eight thousand square foot neighborhood park at the corner of Ebbett and Herring Avenue. And then at the south end is the almost twenty thousand square foot open space. And then there is a sixty-five hundred square foot park in the town, another townhouse area park. Based on the limited amount of detail provided on the open space, staff is recommending specific open space adjustments along with additional details to ensure the intent of the PUD requirement is met. The first is an extension of the linear park pathway located at the north end of the townhouse lots to fully extend from Herring Avenue through the linear park and connect with Boyer Avenue rather than the current configuration of the path that ends in the parking lot. The second is an expansion of the proposed eight thousand square foot open space at the corner of Ebbett and Herring to allow for creation of a focal point neighborhood park through the elimination or relocation of the proposed garage and parking lot. That is this area. So it is to make this more of a focal point by either moving this garage here and somehow expanding that as a central location. And the third is a relocation of the open space at the south end away from the corner to a more central location along the railroad corridor such as, and just to the west here, which back here, the concern is that it is out of view. And for safety purposes, it'd be better to be located more centrally to the apartment units where that is more visible. Again, there is sufficient area to remove parking and create a more usable space that is safe and has pedestrian access. Pursuant to Sandpoint City Code ten-three-ten and making its recommendation to the City Council, the Commission shall find that the fact submitted with the FTP application established that the proposed development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. Each individual unit of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as an independent unit capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability, or that adequate assurance will be provided that such objective will be attained. The uses proposed will not be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect, which would not be achieved under standard zoning regulations. The streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated multimodal traffic. The increased densities will not generate vehicular traffic in such amounts as to overload the street network outside the PUD, and that any impacts have been adequately mitigated. Any exception from standard zoning regulations is warranted by the design and other amenities incorporated into the final development plan in accordance with this chapter in the adopted policy of City Council. The PUD is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan, and the existing and proposed utility services are adequate for the population densities and non-residential uses proposed. Onto the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat with the noted conditions is able to meet the standards of section ten-one-six. The traffic import, the traffic impact study undertaken with earlier phases continues to be valid with proposed uses generating less traffic than what was originally proposed. And the, there have been conditions added to address the private maintenance and parking restrictions for the purely local drives. Based on staff's review of the three applications, and in particular, the requested PUD and preliminary plat, the following fourteen conditions, in addition to any conditions the Commission believes are necessary to meet code requirements, should be included in any motion to recommend approval to City Council. A PUD master development agreement would then incorporate these conditions for consideration. First, the applicant shall prepare codes, covenants, and restrictions that establish one or more homeowners associations and provide that the HOAs are responsible for the operation and maintenance of all common areas and open spaces within the boundaries of the PUD and incorporating detailed maintenance standards and provisions for maintenance of the same. The final stormwater management plan shall be developed in a manner that does not negatively affect the functionality of the open spaces or railroad corridor. Preliminary plat sheet five dated six-three, two thousand and twenty-two. The majority of the pros accesses throughout block one qualify as purely local drives. Those do not provide through access and are generally short in length and serve a relatively limited number of lots. Purely local drives shall be publicly dedicated but privately maintained right-of-way with a minimum width and configuration meeting the International Fire Code. The access south of lots fifty-nine through sixty-eight functions as an alley and shall meet the same conditions as the purely local drives. The primary east-west access south of lots forty-three, forty-six, forty-nine, fifty-two, fifty-five, fifty-eight, as well as the primary north-south access east of lots forty, thirty-five, thirty, and twenty-five do not qualify as purely local drives because they provide a looped-through access to the purely local drives and shall meet the minimum public right-of-way permitted for a planned unit development of fifty feet. The proposed preliminary plat reflects right-of-way width of approximately forty-six feet along these two primary accesses within block one. The construction documents and final plat shall reflect a minimum right-of-way of fifty feet to provide functionality as a local street and enable necessary maintenance and snow storage. This local street shall be publicly maintained. No driveways other than the purely local drives may access the local street. Or on-street parking on one side of the street shall be permitted where the pavement width is twenty-eight feet or more, and parking on both sides of the street shall be permitted where the pavement is thirty-six feet or more. No parking signs, no parking signs shall be provided wherever these conditions are not met. Purely local drives shall be privately maintained. The final plat shall provide reference to the responsibility of maintenance and city-approved CCRs, incorporating detailed maintenance standards and provisions. Six, the hammerhead turnaround to accessing the townhouse lots must measure at least sixty feet in both directions from the center line. Due to the proximity of the residential development to the railroad tracks, exterior walls shall have a sound transmission class not less than fifty or not less than forty-five field-tested for airborne noise. Penetrations or openings in construction assemblies shall be sealed, lined, insulated, or otherwise treated to maintain the required ratings. No lots may be sold and no building permits can be issued prior to final plating. Applications for street names shall be made with Bonner County. Detailed plans for the open spaces incorporating staff-recommended changes are provided and incorporated into the master development agreement. Detailed landscape plans, including size, type, and location of plant material, automatic sprinklers, locations, specifications for all build elements such as paths or benches, shall be incorporated into the master development agreement. The proposed multi-family development on lots one through four, block two, shall meet the site design and building standards included in section nine-four-two-three-H of the Sandpoint City Code, excepting nine-four-two-three-H-six pertaining to building height and nine-four-two-three-H-seven pertaining to building orientation toward the street. Revise plans and building design shall be reviewed at the building permit site plan review phase. Thirteen, the zoning standards table shall be amended to incorporate requirements of condition twelve and incorporated into the master development agreement. Other city codes in place at the time of building permit application shall apply. Modifications to the zoning standards table may only be approved through an amendment to the PUD. And finally, in accordance with City Code ten-three-ten-one, the development shall be initiated within two years of the date of approval. The infrastructure construction and recording of the final plat shall occur within two years from the date of approval. The building construction and final certificates of occupancy shall occur in phases and complete within five years for date of PUD approval as further described and conditioned in the master development agreement. After receiving public comment and deliberation, the Commission may make recommendations based on findings of fact to City Council on the three separate requests, the rezoning, the PUD final development plan, and the amended preliminary plat for University Park Phase Four. That is all I have.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
Amy, in regards to the master development agreement, as referenced on multiple pages within the staff report?
Yes.
That's a culmination after, between council staff, after our body gets done, correct?
Correct. It is after the planning commission makes its recommendations, so it's go to council, and then council will generally direct staff to, depending on what actions they take, then they will direct staff to create the development agreement, and it will come back to City Council for approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
On page four, Mr. Chairman, on page four of the staff report, the final document, well, throughout the document, it indicates that there's not a significant impact to traffic patterns or traffic in general, but it talks about adding a, a light at the intersection of what would be Boyer and Baldy. Just curious when that is supposed to take place?
I don't know that we have a time that it will, it will involve a complete reconstruction, realignment of Baldy. But as part of the initial University Park, money was put aside. The, the development's contribution to that light was put in escrow.
Gotcha. One more question too, same, same page, page four talks about the, you know, in consideration of multimodal, modal transportation as having quiet crossings, and it talks about perhaps additional safety improvements for the railroad and pedestrians. What, what are some examples of what that would be?
That, that, what's in the multimodal plan is a discussion of doing a quiet crossings study at all of our crossings to determine which could meet the standard for quiet crossing, which means the trains don't honk their horns. So it involves a lot of a lot of different safety elements that go into it, and part of that includes pedestrian crossings, but there's also a lot more signals. And it's, I think I had heard the estimate that it is about a million dollars a crossing to implement one of those. So we will be doing a study to, to look at which of the crossings, but I think Boyer Avenue is probably a likely candidate.
I have one more, from page thirteen. And it was in reference to duplex standards, and this might just be, there were certain standards that were waived, and certain standards in the staff recommendations that were encouraged to be made, and I'm just checking. And that was in duplex standards are larger than development standards, sixty-nine percent versus fifty percent. Is that within because in a PUD, you had conformity? And that's why? That's the recommendation?
That, and again, that, the tables that, that I provide on tables one and two, I'll bring those up. Those aren't staff recommendations, those are what is being requested. So, um, let's see here.
I was referencing numbers one through fourteen.
Oh, one, the conditions of approval?
Yeah, I didn't notice any change.
Oh, correct. I, I did not put a condition on that that be changed from. That be changed from sixty-nine percent.
But a PUD allows that waiver, right? Because and you have, in this case, multiple duplexes, so you're able to retain that. Visual appeal and you're going to have a similarity for that retains some of the character. Because it should flow within this planned unit development.
Correct, the, the. What is being requested a PUD is. A give and take. And it is that they are asking for waivers for a certain type of development that. Would not perhaps happen under current zoning and I think what they're saying is at a fifty percent. Garage door, the duplex, the way they have them designed. They couldn't do what they are doing or wanting to do. And that is the, the commission must evaluate whether these requested deviations. Are creating a neighborhood and there are enough other trade-offs or benefits, whether it's the open space or what have you. That warrant. That trade-off of giving some, some deviations on the standard zoning for the development that is proposed. So you are correct through a PUD that is allowable.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one that you'd mentioned that a PUD is a give and take. Can you elaborate a little bit on that just for our, to refresh our focus?
Well, it's summarized probably best. In the code. So, as stated in the code, the PUD is development of land. Which the standard land use regulations may be modified or weighed in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of lands. In conformance with an approved planned unit development, which accentuates usable open space, recreational uses, public amenities. Community housing and harmonious development with surrounding property and the city at large. The purpose of the provisions of this chapter. Will be to guide a major development of land and construction by encouraging planned unit development so as to achieve the following. A maximum choice of living environments by allowing a variety of housing and building types. And permitting an increased density per acre and a reduction in lot dimensions, yards, building setbacks, and area requirements. A more useful pattern of open space and recreational areas. And if permitted as part of the project, more convenience in the location of neighborhood, commercial uses, recreational uses, and services. A development pattern which preserves and utilizes natural topography and geologic features, scenic vistas. Trees and other vegetation and prevents the disruption of natural drainage patterns. A more efficient use of land that is generally achieved through conventional development. Thus resulting in substantial savings through shorter utilities and streets while encouraging connectivity. And a development pattern in harmony with land use density, multimodal transportation facilities and community facility. Objects of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So there's two building heights only in this development, forty-five and forty-eight?
The townhouses meet the requirement.
The forty?
They're less than forty, but yes, they would be within forty feet of that, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I'm just concerned about the setback along Boyer, North Boyer. Only fourteen feet, three inches with lots one through fifteen in block one and then lot one in block two. With just a thirteen-foot setback, I don't. I imagine, well, I guess this would be for the developer fencing or something along the lines, it just seems for aesthetics. Along North Boyer, just seems like it would be right there on top of you as you're. Walking or riding your bike along there compared to the rest of the neighborhood in the area along North Boyer, I can't think of anything that's that close. Along that route. So to me, as far as aesthetics wise. I just guess I'm surprised that it's, that would remain that way, that close.
Commissioner, is that a question?
Oh, yes, sorry, so, so Amy, my question is, would you, did you guys discuss that within staff or was that one of those give and takes? Or wasn't, was not a concern?
Yeah, it was not raised as a concern. Because I think part of the discussion. In university, in the earlier phases was that the houses were turning away from. They were, the backyard was facing the streets, then you had this fence. And what this is trying to do is turn the, the buildings so they're fronting and framing the right of way instead of. Just blocking it off with a fence to, to screen private property. So it is close. As you cross the tracks and you get down to where Milltown is, which is not far from here, those are. I think ten feet from. Boyer. So, so right now, you're right, there isn't anything that close. But actually, the CUP that was approved actually will have a building up to the much closer. Or not, not much closer, but closer than what is there. Thank you.
Last que, well, my last question, hopefully. And are there other PUDs in the city limits that incorporate commercial retail? As a completed product? That you know of? Or is that a common practice for there to be a PUD that has that component to it?
It is common that there's a mix of uses in a PUD. But the PUDs that I am aware of, and I'm not going to tell you I am aware of all of them, are strictly residential. So Northview Drive was a PUD. And now, that's the only, I'm just very familiar with that as of recently. But to answer your question, it does occur that there is a mix of uses because again, zoning typically. Segregates uses, so a PUD is a way to try to get a mix of uses. But I don't know that we have a good example in. Of.
Yeah, I didn't know one either, that's why.
A mix of uses and beauty.
Is there any multimodal component to this that you know of?
Well, there is the, obviously, there's a multi-use path along the west. Side. Start to see, so that there's the multi-use path on Boyer. On the west property line and then that, that's one of the questions is more clarity of what is this connection here? And otherwise, there are sidewalks throughout on the local streets, there will be sidewalks and sidewalks to the multifamily.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there is no retail and retail component in this development, is there?
There is not.
Okay. I just needed that for clarification, thank you.
If there's no more questions. I will now yield the floor to the applicant's presentation. If the applicant's representative will please step to the podium and introduce yourself.
Pulling up here, okay, already. Thanks, Amy. Commissioners, my name Derek Mulgrew, I was in front of this, this group about, it was a year and a half ago. For the first entitlement phase for single family. And before we get going on this presentation, I want to thank you, Amy, for all the work you put into this. Tremendous amount of detail, feedback. It's been great to go back and forth and work with somebody and welcome to Sandpoint. I want to address some of the things that I, that you all brought up just right out of the gate before I dive into this. When we sat in front of this commission. The overwhelming feedback was. Don't design a community that's just corridored off and doesn't look outward. And that read, that really resonated with me because I had planned to do a more dense development. As we transitioned southbound on Boyer towards the railroad tracks, it made sense to add multifamily dense housing there. And the Boyer corridor is a really long one. And there's a wonderful path, as you all are aware of, north-south there that. People regularly use kids, adults traversing the area, I think it's ten feet or twelve feet wide. And the feedback in the first round was, you know, please don't put a fence all the way down there and block it off. So I think you had the question about why are these lots or these homes right up on Boyer? The idea was to develop a community that faced outward and. Was appealing for people to traverse through. There are features and open space within the community that won't just be for those community members, that there'll be public spaces. There's, it's also a thoroughfare to get, whether it's to the Boyer connector or to Popsicle Bridge and then on into, to City Beach. So. I took that feedback from that planning and zoning meeting to, in this phase, really design a community that looked outward. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of put that out there from a, from a first standpoint, so. I'll get into a short, not death by PowerPoint presentation, but give you a little, a little outline of what I'd like to hit with you and then. When I'm done, obviously, I'd, I'd love to take your questions. So from an outline standpoint, let me go ahead and just play here. The history here is former University of Idaho agricultural land entitled. Single-family developments that had two different ownerships, there's a different ownership to the north and there's me kind of in the middle to the south. I want to get into why, why I chose to do a PUD rather than a standard subdivision. And, and primarily driven by fee simple, so meaning real property from the ground to the air. Townhome lots that the code doesn't currently allow, so that, that was the main impetus behind doing a PUD. But I want to introduce a little bit later our, our partner, Williams Communities, who's working in the first phase of the subdivision. There's forty-nine single-family home lots going in. They're, they're a large regional builder, so this is, this is master planned from that single-family development, that's not a part of this PUD. I've got some maps to illustrate where that is, just so you have an understanding or a reminder. So the flow is from lower density to higher density, but everything talks to each other and it's one builder. That's not something that, that Sandpoint is seen on, on this scale. And I, I bring it up as a, as a huge advantage. Because there's cohesive development, there's wonderful architecture and there's a mix of products, not just. You know, fifteen different builders in there throwing up, you know, whatever. Get into, you know, the, the rental property, so there's property that I plan to hold myself as, as rental, so the duplex in the apartments. And this meets a variety of housing, so whether it's workforce housing in the apartments, younger people. In the, the service business, tourism. Or the townhomes, empty nesters, retirees, downsizing, first time, you know, home buyer. And then the duplexes could, could fit a variety of housing needs from. A family relocating, you know, not, you know, quite ready to buy a house, wants to rent something that is not an apartment. So I'll get into the design, you know, I think. One of you all had a question about the duplexes in the garage front, so there's a reason behind that design and I'll, I'll get into that. The zone change from single-family to multifamily. One of you pointed out, there's not a commercial component, so I'm going to get into why that is and its proximity to downtown. And then an amendment to the already approved preliminary plat, so just kind of an overview of. Here's what, you know, just, it's, it's a refresher, I should say, so some of you have changed over on this, this council, so. Want to give a little background there on that as well. So entitled in winter of twenty-twenty was the single-family home sites that, that I mentioned. Completed those fifty lots, summer of twenty-twenty-two. Williams Communities acquired them in September timeframe, started building on those, those lots just north of this PUD boundary. Spring of this year, the, we completed the right of way except for paving and curb, all the public infrastructure. There was a, a very large lift station constructed last year to handle all the wastewater from this development that was, that was. Anticipated in terms of the density, so that was all installed and completed. And the utilities associated with this. Development. Installed in the right of way in anticipation of a hopeful approval because the, the, which is a little backwards, so. Normally, you're just, you're completing the right of way, then you got to go dig up the street and I didn't want to do that, I wanted to plan. Smarter than that and install the infrastructure to fill these large lots that will then be broken up into smaller lots, so we went ahead and. Did a lot of that work to be in position because the building season is so short here, especially for dirtwork. At the Boyer improvements were just complete, we have a tiny little section to complete north of, of Moscow Street, so if you've driven down Boyer recently. You know, you've been inconvenienced by, by construction many times, but we've widened the road five feet to accommodate. A turn lane into Moscow and into what will be a continuation of Ebbett. That was all per the development agreement from the first round of entitlements. I think it was mentioned that there's a future signalization at Baldi and Boyer, you know, that's in that development agreement. And has been satisfied, so that's, that's already been completed. We, we redid the traffic study for the actual numbers and demonstrated the trips, you know, went down, so. From a density standpoint, normally, some of this trade-off in a PUD is, you're asking for. So from a density standpoint, normally some of this trade off in a PUD is you're asking for a lot more density. When you look at the PU day whole, it's really kind of right in line with the multifamily density that, that current zoning allows. So we're not really asking for, you know, a, a ton of density. If you look at the whole site, now if you look at just the townhomes, it would be more dense, but if you look at the whole site. Townhomes, duplexes and apartments, it's about the same density as the current multifamily zone. And so we're here today for a, in, in, in a request for a zone change from single family, multifamily. The PUD both preliminary and final, which essentially means. I put a lot more into this upfront. It's been about a, well, just over a year in terms of engineering, design, survey. Rather than coming to you all in two separate actions, a preliminary kind of. Here's what we'd like to do and get feedback. I kind of put it, put it all in there and, and really, what I want to portray to you all is that, that's a, that's a tremendous investment. It's a lot of risk. So, some people would just say I'm, I'm just dumb enough to do that, but. I, I felt that we had a, had a great planned community and, and folks sitting in your chair would love it, so. Eager to get the feedback. This is a little history again, as we kind of go through our original outline, so the red here is, is the, is my ownership. And the first entitlement in 20 and then construction and completion in 21. Were those 50 single family home lots that you see there on the, on the right hand side of the screen? So that's already been done, that's just north of the PUD boundary. We go to this real quick. Here's the preliminary plat on the left that was already approved, so that right of way continues down. South and then traverses west to connect to Boyer at Ebbett. So the preliminary, already approved preliminary plat had. These large lots with no infill. At the time, we didn't know exactly what we were going to do, but we did the traffic study at that time to, to study pretty. Pretty intense traffic and that's what triggered the Boyer improvements, the signalization, so on and so forth. So on the right hand side is the preliminary plat of what fills in those large, large lots. To just give you some, some context. Why a PUD? So would have been. Relatively easy, I mean, the, the whole property zone, single family, which is not in alignment with the comprehensive plan. To just keep going with a single family housing. I felt that there was a, a need to address. Product that could be more efficiently built and then need a different, a different price point. And an opportunity to fill housing need both in a fee simple townhome environment purchase. And also rental. Environment as well, so duplexes with very private rear yards and, and apartment complex for workforce housing. Back to the townhomes and, and fee simple. A lot of these projects get condoed, so. It's much harder, well, and now with. Interest rates going up, banks tightening even more, it's really hard to get conventional financing on condo product. Typically you have higher requirements for income, you have more, more down. They're riskier for lenders and they're riskier for developers frankly too. There's in Washington State, there's very few condo projects because of all the lawsuits, that's as a result because of the HOAs being defunct, et cetera, et cetera. So developing small lots where. The townhomes are attached, they have shared walls, but the property line actually goes up through the demising wall. Gives you the efficiency of a multifamily product from the build side. But it allows the buyer to, to get conventional financing essentially. Which is, which is really important. And currently, the code doesn't require, or it does require a minimum lot size of 3,500 square feet, which is. Which is nearly impossible to do what we proposed here with these narrow townhomes. They would be, you know, super deep, you know, to get that 3,500 square foot. So that's, that's the primary impetus for me to choose the PUD. There are other things within the application, as Amy pointed out, that, that require the PD of PUD. Such as a, a little bit higher height ask on the apartment buildings, the orientation of the building, so what, where you call the front versus the side. Some, which is nomenclature, but it's important because this particular site, you know, didn't allow. For some of those things to happen that fit the standard code. So we kind of had to design it and then say, well, what things didn't, didn't meet? And then put together that table that said, here are the things that didn't meet and it, and it didn't turn out to be. The link that, that the list didn't turn out to be fairly long actually, so. Just, I, I want to give you kind of. An idea why, why I chose to go down that route, because it is a lot more time consuming, it's, it's not. It's not a right, so it's discretionary, you all are going to, you know, provide input and, 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 and ask questions. It's, it's, it's a trade off of things. I think the cohesiveness of the development is, is a major a, a advantage and the. It designed around pedestrians rather than automobiles, it's just a theme here that I've continued to hear over and over again. It's important to people that live here, that walk and bike. And this, this is for all intensive purposes, kind of right smack in the middle of our, our, our city. Keeping it going here, that. Here's the, the contemplated phasing. This was really designed around the right of way already being there, so you kind of want to develop in the proximity of that, of that right of way. So it's those first fiveplex townhomes, the duplexes, then apartments and then back over to the townhome phases. This is the, the comp, the current comprehensive plan. Which is really kind of an illustrative watercolor, so back to, you know, why a PUD? I mean, the, and, and a zone change specifically to get this, this density in the multifamily zone. It was own single family so far out of the, there's no single family on the, on the comp plan, so we're, we're bringing it into alignment. There isn't, there isn't a commercial component. I just felt like there, it's, it's too far down, too far away from downtown and it's not. We need dense housing, hitting a different price point, a multitude of different types of rental product. And it's hard to make those developments with a, with a commercial component work. And this specific location, I just didn't feel like, like that would be the right thing to do, so. It's in, it's consistent with the big multifamily swath there that's, that's currently on the comp plan. And, but doesn't have some of the commercial component. Here's a slide on what your current, current zoning is, is. Which is odd that the peninsula there, which you can't build on is zoned commercial, but it is. And the rest of it's single family currently, and the ask is for a change to multifamily. Here is the preliminary and final development plan, so this is kind of the, the map that really incorporates. All of it frankly. The. Let's go to the duplexes, you know, out of, out of the gate, I'd like to kind of talk about the. Why those are designed the way that they are, that product geared towards families. Wanted to create these large private rear yards and the way to do that was. You've got to have garage in the front. The code allows for 50%, I think we were 67%, but I think the architects did a, which will go into the elevations, they did a phenomenal job on. Incorporating the garage door into the paneling of the house, so it feels like it's siding, there's windows in it. There's projections above, so it isn't what nobody wants is just all garage. Front duplexes, so I think that we, we achieved that. By maintaining the ability to have nice private rear yards. The, the townhomes, it was mentioned about the open space that we're just, we're right there, right under. You know, this is something that we, we talked with city staff about and. That number, we, we're actually closer to like 25% open space. It's debatable, I mean, there's all, there's all of these paths in between the units here with trees. Residents can traverse through there, the property lines don't block you off. So in the city's calculation, that, that's not included in my calculation, it was, it came up to 25 or 26%. So I think it's really generous in the open space, however, I do agree with, you know. Some of the comments about making specifically this. The park by the garages just south of that last duplex unit. We could easily move those garages, that was one of the city staff's comments. Down to the, to the south, kind of in the middle. We're, we're way overparked in the whole development actually, which, which is nice. I, I didn't want to skimp on parking, I think that's important and oftentimes developers just park the minimum or they try. In a PUD, for example, to underpark it and it just functionally doesn't work, we have snow here, so you got to have places for snow storage. And sometimes you lose some parking spaces, so we're overparked, but point is, you know, that garage could easily move and make that area just, just a little bit bigger. I'm going to exit from this and open up. Open up our elevations and I'll come back to the apartments. So. Here's your Boyer streetscape. So again, back to a community that faces outward instead of inward. I think you can pull property or pull product up to the street if it has nice architectural flow. And it's appealing. This is a little bit reminiscent of, if you, if any of you are familiar with Kendall Yards in Spokane. That's maybe some of the design impetus, so this would be your Boyer streetscape. As currently proposed. As opposed to what, what you'll see on the north side, which is just a, you know, forever fence. That's fine too, but this, this development. One, you wanted to be inviting and have people traverse through it, so. As you're moving down, these are just, these, these all are illustrative examples of the, of the elevations, illustrative examples of kind of the. Interconnected pathways that, that allow folks, residents and the public to traverse through the development. There's a sixplex unit, there's a fiveplex unit, there's a threeplex unit. These are the duplexes, so as you can see, try to zoom in a little more here. The garages on these really are kind of incorporated into the, the siding and they have windows in the garages, so it's. The, they've got really big side porches that, you know, the code says that the front door should be on the front. These are on the side, but we, we have generous porch area. Again, back to above the garages, these, these have projections, you know, they're not just flat walls. They have architectural inference, you have siding going vertical and horizontal. To try to minimize from the street, just looking at a bunch of garages. And I, I think that they accomplished that. Moving down, so here's more of the, the townhome elevations. Here's another. Product. Trying to find the, here's the sides. The two story. Here it is, so there are certain buildings within to try to break up the, all the height. Where the, the end cappers are two stories rather than three stories and they're a little wider. Again, it's just to try to not have a look of like row housing, the same thing, so you've got, you know, breakups in widths. You have breakup in, in siding and projections and now you have breakups in heights, so it just adds to the architectural appeal. Here's a different unit, this is. Also a fiveplex. And here showing some of the. Garages. So the door, the front doors on these either face. Kind of the, uh, uh, common pathways, landscape pathways or the side, they're not on the garage side, so they're. Effectively rear loaded, alley loaded, if you will, for entrances for vehicles and then. The front doors are on the opposite or the side, depending on which, which union you're at. This might be. A good time. Yeah, I think is a good time, I think Dave, to introduce you, I, I asked Dave Little to come. As a representative of Williams Homes, just to give you guys some, some context on what they've been working on that there on the. Single families, they, they would be building this development and I think it's a, it's a huge advantage to have. Somebody that's master planned communities in other areas, they're a regional builder and I'll let you get into the details, Dave, but.
Sure.
Go ahead and, and feel free to scroll on this, if there's any of the elevations you want to zone in on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, first of all, and staff as well. I just want to thank you for having the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I haven't had a chance to do that up here yet, Derek went through the full entitlement process on our single family site before we acquired it. As I said, my name is Dave Little, I'm the chief operating officer for Williams Homes, I'm also in Idaho, our division president, so I have two roles. For the company, our home is in Meridian, Idaho with our family and our Idaho headquarters is there as well. We, uh, we have about, so we've been building homes for families in the north, in the western United States for 26 years. So we have projects in Montana, Idaho, California and Texas currently. Idaho, we have about a 420 lot pipeline predominantly in the Treasure Valley area and Star Eagle. And in the city of Boise, we also, as you well know, have our Sandpoint project up here. We were attracted to the Sandpoint market for, for all of the outdoor beauty and lifestyle that is. Everything Sandpoint, we tend to build homes in areas that have a, a really enhanced outdoor lifestyle. And it doesn't get more so than here in Sandpoint, so thoroughly excited to be here. We're really excited to watch the progress in our project go up. And I just wanted to come here and on behalf of Derek is a, is a good partner and say. We are really excited to get this project approved. We are building a townhome project, very, very similar to this in Star, Idaho currently. We haven't gone vertical yet, but we've got the land development complete and we're in architectural plant check to get started later this year on models. It's a three, threeplex project that's loaded similar to these homes. We've also built, uh, Row Towns, just, this project was modeled off another Row Town project we did in another state. So we're very familiar with this project, we're very familiar with the lifestyle it creates. I agree with Derek, opening the, the front to, to Boyer is the right thing to do for walkability and for that street scene when you drive by. Very in the pro, we have variation in the architecture, a lot of architecture emotion in, in elevation styles, elevation colors. Actual height to the buildings will vary and also in the materials that are used on the, on the fronts of the buildings as well. And so I, I think if you've seen our, our project going up. Some of the variation in architecture there, you'll see a lot of that similar variation in this project as we continue on. Same architect. William Hesmoholtz Architects builds and designs renowned project all over the world. Bill Hesmoholtz himself is a friend of mine and they are not absentee architects. In fact, the principal in charge of our project up here spent all day on site with me last Thursday. Walking every single plan, every single production home. Looking for ways to enhance interior space, elevations on top of what we already were approved. So I can tell you without fear of contradiction that WHA is the right architect for this market and for, and for the city and this project. And you're seeing it come to fruition right next door, so we're excited. Uh, I know we're asking for, um, some variances here, but I, I think you'll see as we go through the presentation that there are good reasons for what we're trying to accomplish. And at the end of the day, I think we're going to have a really great project for the city. So see if I have any questions for me and I'll turn it back over to Derek unless you want me to cover any separate. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, let's get over to. I'm going to get back into this presentation and go over the apartment elevations. So these are four story walk up apartments that have two different varying roof designs. Um, so let me get to the side here. So this is a split shed roof. And the other one, the shed goes the other direction. So here's the other side projection. In my, you know, original design, this had a trying to fit in the, uh, within the code, uh, 40 feet height, I had a parapet wall and a membrane roof and, um, not, not being experienced, frankly, th- that is just a cost prohibitive design, um, for, for what these apartments will target. So, um, through the PUD was another reason to, to ask for that 48 feet. These would be, um, wood trusses, which dramatically reduces the, the build cost. You can put a comp roof on them, um, instead of a membrane roof. Some of those materials have gone absolutely crazy through the pandemic and especially petroleum based products. So that's the impetus behind the height ask, because these are not high end condominiums. These are, um, very much a target for workforce housing. Um, we don't, don't have enough of it for rent. And you've got to be cost conscious on the build. Otherwise the rents just spiral out of control. So, um, I think that the architects did a nice job and, and incorporating what will be some hearty panels and metal panels. It's got kind of a contemporary flair to it. That there are for, you know, there's stairs all the way up to the fourth, but again, the target isn't, you know, retired people. Interestingly enough, you know, we've taken a drone at that level. You've got views of the lake. And so I, I mean, if I was, you know, in the tourism business, young and wanted to run up the stairs, I'd probably pick the, the top, but it, but it won't appeal to everyone and it, and it's not supposed to. This, this product is for, um, our young workforce housing or, or, you know, somebody, uh, working at, um, Dyer formerly Quest, you know, machining and entry level, entry level jobs. I'm going to go back to on that, on that note, because I think, um, one of the conditions, uh, which I think was number seven, if, if memory serves me, I'm, I'm not sure. And we can probably get to this later. Amy, I don't know when it will come up, but I, I want to put out on there that, um, we, we did a massive sound attenuation berm across the entire south into that, um, prop, uh, property line. I'm sure you've all been familiar with that, that thing. I did that because it was from a, when you're inside of the development, um, you, you don't see the train. You don't see the tracks, but that is, is not a quiet crossing and, um, that attenuation handles the bulk of the, of the noise. This product being targeted to, to hit the most economical rent. If there were a condition of this soundproofing, which I, I'm not aware of, you know, what that cost would be. I guess I just want to make the case that I went to the, the nth here and built that berm for landscaping appeal, a feel of safety within there. So it's not like a small child that, um, I know, an older child could certainly hoof it up that, that berm. But safety aesthetics and sound is, was built into that. And, um, so that condition of the building materials being soundproof, that would add, that would add cost to this, which those types of apartments, just they can't absorb. We're, we're looking at, I am looking at ways to, to incorporate potentially geothermal and solar, you know, um, as a way to bring the rents down, the, the effective net rent. I don't know the economics of, of them, but, um, oftentimes, uh, well, not oftentimes, developers are not incentivized. They build the stuff because the utilities are on the, the tenant. They don't care about, you know, what, if it's efficient or not efficient. But at the same time, you have to find a sweet spot here where your build cost isn't such that your rents have to be high. And, and now we're in a, uh, an environment of, um, you know, uh, the, the servicing, the debt on this product is, is in astronomical compared to it, what it was. So every way we find savings still deliver a quality product. I think is, is what's going to be our goal. And I don't think that soundproofing, given the, the, the berm will be a, the best use for that increase in, in rent. Let me see. I think that that was, I'll leave it on this slide because I think I've, I've got actually a full whole picture here. This might be where we can reference most of your questions. So I mean, I think I've, I think I pretty much went through the presentation. Is it, is it okay, Amy, to ask for questions or is there? I'd, I'd love to engage with you guys at, uh, on any of the thoughts or comments you, you might have.
Sure. Right now is the time. Um, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I got some questions. So, um, I know that the city standpoint's been challenged with water service and, um, going from the single family to the multifamily, I believe changes the fire flow requirements. Has that study been conducted? And do we have anything from the, um, plant, the utility director that says that we're very, and bill will support this development with water? Yes. Question to you, Derek or to, to Amy.
Being within the city and this is proposed to be less dense than was originally proposed. So we have stated that we can provide utilities to it. Yes.
Okay. And of course we've done all the engineering and associated with the public utilities on, on our side. So.
Okay. And then I didn't see a snow storage plan. Is, is there something that's been provided that shows the snow storage plan?
That there wasn't a specific exhibit, but that was really the main driver behind some of these, these hammerheads was not to have long corridors where you're pushing snow to the end is to be able to push it a shorter distance and have it pile up. So, uh, in the town home lots there, those hammerheads are great places for snow storage. This green space into the south where this, uh, this apartment amenity red building is. And then we're over parked. So I think that there's plenty, there's snow storage was definitely thought of in the incorporation. It's just, there's not a specific exhibit.
Okay. I would think that the part of the engineering approval they require a snow storage plan. Is that right?
They will need show s- no storage at the time of like building plans.
Um, and then you talk about, um, the overpart versus, I guess the trade off is more open space. So can you kind of talk to you a little bit more of that? Like, why not make meet the code requirements and give more open space?
Uh, I think we, I think we can. I mean, I, I don't, um, you know, I, I think you're not going to see much of a fight here. I mean, I, I think I agree frankly. These garages here, uh, with my cursors working here, I think that's a simple, we just move these over here. There's not a lot of garages here. Most of this is open parking. I wish we could have incorporated more garages, but, um, you know, there'll be, we'll, we'll cover a lot of these as well. But that would easily bump us up as Amy mentioned, we're right there. I don't know what the exact calculation is, Amy, but th- this one, if you can see our, this open space calculation is 30%. That, that includes, you know, all this stuff in between, which, you know, I've always felt like you should include that. That's, that's genuinely open space. It's not somebody's private property. It's meant to be a thoroughfare for residents or the public. So I guess to answer your question, I mean, I, I think the, one of the conditions in there was moving this garage somewhere over here. And I think that that is, uh, perfectly acceptable.
Okay. And then my last is more out of curiosity. So you talk about workforce affordable housing. Do you have like a rent target range here? This?
It's so hard. Um, I don't use the term, um, affordable housing, at least I try not to, because nothing seems affordable anymore. I, I just think that there's product type that hit a different target, whether it's ownership or rent. And these apartments were designed to hit the lowest, you know, competing rent target for what will be built, but the finances associated with materials which are coming down thankfully. But financing or debt service, which is up, um, I couldn't probably give you an accurate representation, but the intent is to be, as, as economical as it possibly can be.
Okay. Thank you.
Your chair, I have a few questions. So in your plat amendment, PUD application information letter that you sent June 22nd, you'd stated that you wish to implement a program to provide preferential priority rentals to tenants who are employed in Bonner County, if there are legal means. So I'm just curious, did you find any legal means to do this? Or did you do any research to implement some sort of program?
Well, um, you know, it's, I think there is, it's been demonstrated across the street, you know, and that's kind of been an education for me. It'd be nice to have a portion of, you know, the apartments or the duplexes that have that kind of first come. I don't know. I haven't done the due diligence, I guess, to really understand what is required to do that. But I guess what I can say is that there's, you know, this is kind of in the same category is exploring some of these alternatives for energy, whether it be geothermal or solar to offset some of the, the costs of, of the net rent. So it's utilities plus your base rent. I, I don't claim to be the expert, but I usually surround myself by people that are a lot smarter than me. So we're, we explore those types of things. I don't, I think that, uh, it's been done clearly because.
Is that your goal to do a portion of that?
I, I'd like to, uh, but I don't, you know, I'd like, I don't want to make it, I don't want to present that as the, the dangling carrot. You know, I don't want to be disingenuous and say that that's what we're trying to do here. If I can do it and there's a legal means to do it and a way we can incorporate it, then, then it'll happen. So I think that's why you just see it and represented in the application.
I have quite a few questions if anybody wants to, okay. Then you talked about, I, could you put up the parks picture? Because in the reading, there wasn't any mention of the 6,600 square foot.
You're going to have to stop sharing.
Oh, I can do that. Yep.
There wasn't any mention of the, in any of the reading that I saw of the 6,600 square foot park. So while Amy's doing that, the 8,000 square foot park, do you still plan on, it's going to be a children's playground with the tactile, like you had mentioned. In that Ebbet Way, south of Haring.
Right between the duplexes and the apartments. Yeah.
And that's the area that, that's recommended to get rid of that.
Yeah.
Those garages and to make that space larger.
That's correct.
So the 6,600 square foot park area, is that just an open space or is that an actual playground or what?
Is that the one right in the middle? I'm sure Amy will pull this up here and we'll.
Because my concern is, um, I mean, you have that density of 227 living units, you're going to have a lot of kids in that area and to have one playground. I mean, you have these apartment complexes where the majority, you know, you may have more children in that area as opposed to the area to the north. So that playground, that 8,000 square foot playground, you know, would most likely be used with that group. So I was just curious if the 6,600 square foot park in the north part would be a playground, an actual playground, or is it just open space?
I think that was, the idea was that it was more open space, park, park landscaping. And that, that, that park in the, uh, just south of that last duplex unit was more of the focal park designed around children. And that was why the feedback was to, let's make that a little bit bigger and move those garages.
So you plan to keep that as just an open space park, not an actual playground park.
That's, that's correct. Yeah. The, the thought was that the, the playground was in that 8,000 square foot.
For personally, for, you know, living all over the, the country, I, I've seen, you know, similar type developments, but there's always more than one park to suit different areas when you've got this kind of space. So I was just curious about that 6,600 square foot space. And since we're talking about parks, the linear park, I know there was some, not a lot of detail that was in our packet about, uh, the connectivity, I just see that it stops abruptly at the parking lot. Is there any planner, is there any room to continue that trail system that could take you to, to Boyer?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a, that was a, a feedback from the city. And there's, um, what's not represented there. And I'm sure you've all seen it, but we transplanted. I think we lost three, maybe four, every sub alpine for that, the University of Idaho crossed, um, to harden that tree were, were transplanted in a row there. So you've got this really nice buffer between those backyards and the single family homes that are already being built. And what you see there, and it would be very easy to continue that path and connect it to the multimodal path, uh, on Boyer, right there along the parking lot and then pass that triplex unit.
Yeah. Cause there's a lot of mention of your, you know, you want connectivity and I just didn't see that, that I just see a abrupt stop. And then the proposed dog park, where is that?
That, that'd be the idea would be that 19,000 square foot, that big open space in the south.
Okay. All right. So there's my parks question. That one was answered.
That big buffer there between the, where the linear park is also to add, you know, these, these units are taller than the single family homes, right? So you want good distance along with those trees that are planted so that those units aren't staring in the backyards of the single family homes that are just to the north. So there's a huge buffer there and that was.
So in these other open spaces in between, um, the buildings, other than trees and a pathway, you're going to have benches.
Bitches, you know, strategically placed, you know, pathways, you know, landscaped. Thought out, you know.
Any plan for barbecue areas for, I mean, like actual barbecues?
Did you guys think about, I don't, I think that's kind of on the private property, you know, those, they do have, it's, you probably can't. You see the little, the, the darker areas just adjacent to each one of those units. That actually represents the, the actual lot itself. So that would, you know, make sense, but they'll actually have their little kind of area patio, if you will, it won't be fenced off. But I think that that's probably where that activity would occurs right there.
And then for informational purposes, I had read, um, about the approval of the original subdivision was a commitment with KLT with, about the wetlands. And I hadn't seen any other information about that. So I was just wondering if that partnership exists.
Yep.
And if so, what was, what, what is it? What is the plan?
There's a, the intent is still to, to give that, that land is always going to be preserved as open space. So you're talking about it during the original entitlement.
Yes.
There's a center, um, wetland area, there's the Sand Creek corridor. Uh, so we're still working with Canixu Land Trust and another entity to preserve that. And because there's so much stormwater that comes through there, not just from our project, but the airport and other projects. That's why it's just tied up into essentially them crossing their Ts and dotting the Is, but that's still, I don't put it in this application because it doesn't touch the PUD boundary. But it, it was important to me in the beginning that we preserve that area and the access to Sand Creek.
Cause Wetland E is in this PUD. Within this PUD.
Wetland E.
E, yes, there's, there's several, there's A through D, D is not on the property. But A, B and C is in this, the northern development in Wetland E.
Oh, you're talking about, I, I.
There's that small area that.
You're talking about that. What was actually delineated wetlands. So that, that actually. what was actually delineated wetland. So that that actually there, yes. So we had to to buy credits to fill that.
Okay.
So that's it. It was a, it basically was probably right for the second building in. Yeah, it was a a low area that stayed wet. They delineated that as a wetland, so.
So you mitigated that, made it.
We did.
Not a wetland anymore.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, sorry, I didn't, that's what I was, Wetland E.
Asked and answered. And you asked my other questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks.
One of the third recommendation was a relocation of the nineteen thousand eight hundred square foot open space located at the southeast corner of the multifamily lots to a more central location along the rail corridor, such as where the apartment amenity is identified. Could I get a response or thoughts?
Yeah, no, thank you. I actually forgot about that one, that that, you know, we would have to, it, if you haven't been out there in that corner, which on paper looks like a hole, the berm goes down in elevation and the plan is to have less of a slope back there. We have a lot of fill to bring in and it's really easy to do because we have two hundred some, two hundred plus units to dig, right? So you transport that material and you keep building it up back there. And there's parking lot there. We would have to, you know, that's the main outflow for stormwater. So the, right, which is right the very southeast corner. So relocating that would be meaning going back to the drawing board with engineering for stormwater and where that's collected. So I'm I'm not opposed to, you know, originally contemplated that apartment amenity that you see that that little red box there. The thought was, you know, is that a a leasing office with a small gym, you know, maybe a coffee shop, you know, but we kind of went away from the commercial idea. So that that area could also produce more open space if it was desired. But as far as changing the parking lot, I really would hate to do that because of the engineering involved with the the stormwater. But creating a larger park area in the middle there by the duplex and by relocating that garage, totally open to doing that. Hopefully that Luke answers your question. I.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I might have more questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Fire away.
Asked and answer. It's good to be third. Mr. Commissioner, I have one question. On the apartment at the south end, right at the railroad crossing, you know, to me, it just seems kind of oddly positioned how it sticks out so far toward the crossing. In any of the design work, did you guys ever, you know, switch that to where it ran east, west instead of north, south?
We did, yeah. And it just the topography out there didn't make sense as far as stepping the foundation and where the current grade is versus the grade we're going to bring in as you develop. There was, there was about fifteen different iterations of this. And one of them had the apartment building sticking all the way down in the southeast corner there and it's just, it's just so low. So the short answer is yes. And the, as far as along Boyer there, we wanted to make sure that you see, you maintain that streetscape like we're doing with the townhomes. You see the side of the apartment building because aesthetically, the the ends of the apartment building and whatever you want to call the front or the side, that isn't the most aesthetically pleasing. You have more projections and more architectural interest on along the broad side of it than you do the the small side. So, so yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. I I don't have a question about rent. I'm probably more concerned about, you know, can somebody who makes thirty five thousand, forty thousand a year afford an apartment in that complex?
Yeah, I mean, if they're renting anything, the the idea is if they're renting anything else in standpoint, you know, and think of any other apartment complex, we would be competitive with that. That that would be the hope. So as far as it it relates to their income, you know, I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure, but I I get your.
Tough question.
Yeah.
But you know, there's so many people who are in that income bracket that drive miles and miles to get here.
Yep.
So I felt like I had to ask it to see if.
Totally fair.
Get in there.
And and all I would say is again, like, I mean, th- this isn't, the the apartment financial equations, i- it breaks easy. Sometimes I wonder why we we're even doing it. I mean, going back to, you know, why a P U D and why not just have these be single family homes all the way through? That would be a lot easier, a lot more margin, more predictability. If you notice that we put property lines on each one of the apartments, so they're all on their own individual piece of a part of property. There's a reason behind that. You know, I got really educated on some of the federal funding associated with multifamily housing, not HUD, but Fannie and Freddie. And you can't have an active construction site to get perm financing, you know, low, non recourse financing. So, you know, that was why there's a property line between each one of those buildings as an example, because we're gonna try our darndest to build something that a workforce housing individual would be able to afford. That's, that's the intent. And and as far as the placement of all this, the engineering has just tried to stress that, you know, on the front end is that there's so much cost, sunk cost into the engineering and and it's based on the the placement of these buildings, the existing dipog- topography and what you got to build up, cut and fill all the public utilities and the infrastructure. So there was a tremendous amount of work that went in that you all didn't get to see. I just, I just hopefully want to portray that that there's a lot of thought that went into the boxes that you see in the position. They they, there's a lot of thought and a lot of of cost and expense associated with figuring out where's the most economical place to put them. You know, because if you put one in a huge ravine and you got to fill it or step the foundation and it might add a hundred thousand dollars. Luckily, we have good soils, decent soil, I should, good soils around here is not a thing. But for example, we don't have to do rammed aggregate piers. That's about a hundred and twenty grand savings per building, thankfully. As as an example, so I guess in the spirit of your your conversation, I and I appreciate you asking, we're going to do everything we can to make those appealing for.
Yeah, I thought you did a really good job in explaining, you know, saving on cost and materials. And it's important when you come down to your net rent, so about the presentation altogether was very good. So thank you for.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
If I could piggyback, if I could piggyback on the rent of the apartments, I just looked, so they're about six hundred and ten to nine hundred and ninety five square feet, which is about the average of our, or about this, within the sizes of our ADUs that we have within town. You know, just a little bit bigger, but not much. And those are, you know, the going rate for those are, I don't know of any that are higher than fourteen, fifteen hundred. And those are for the larger ones. So I was just thinking as a price point, I, I don't, like I said, I don't want to pin you down to an amount, but I mean, is that something that would be a reasonable price point? You know, between a thousand to fourteen hundred for a, I mean, six hundred and twelve square feet, that's a, that's a small little.
Yeah, I think for the small one, yeah. I think that there, you know, the pro forma we originally ran, which was on, you know, really old build costs and low interest on the on the construction side, your, your, your construction financing. You know, it ranged from, you know, fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred. And it was high, it's so highly dependent on material cost and cost of debt. And that's why the federal government is so involved in multifamily housing. Because if they weren't, nobody would build it. It's, it's just, it's a very fine line. But I can't price, I can't price it out, right? Like, so I can't, you know, i- you know, even if I wanted to charge two thousand dollars a month when down the street at whatever apartment or or an A D U, for example. So we're going to have to be market competitive. All I'm trying to do is portray through, through this presentation is that you, you know, we we've taken into consideration as much as we can on the front end from design and engineering, keep the cost down. And an example, one of the conditions is adding cost, this, the sound, which, which I felt we mitigated with the berm. You know, so so if you have stuff like that, it it jacks up the rent, right? I mean, it just does because it it it, all this stuff passes through at some point, you know.
So my next question to you about the sound, have you been in one of those those homes in the other, in the northern subdivision with the train going by? Have you, do you know what the sound?
Yeah, yeah. So good question. So the, there's the Boyer tracks and there's the tracks that that go along behind those duplexes. Those tracks are not used as much. The Boyer stuff is very frequent. And they blow the whistle there, which is, which is what, that that actually is what makes it the worst. But the, uh, uh, an actual physical structure or dirt mound, you know, in front of that is actually the best in terms of attenuation. You're still going to have the vibration and there's not a lot you can do with the vibration, but um.
But it's still really loud.
It is.
You're taking these that are much closer than those homes and not wanting to put soundproof in them. So my question to you is, why? I do understand, you know, the costs, but you're that much closer and now you have all these, you know, families that are living within a stone's throw of the, of the railroad tracks and a berm is nice, but it does not alleviate most of the problem of the noise problem. So the, my question to you, or I guess it's more of a statement, the soundproof materials, especially in these, these apartments, you know, I personally, I would, I think it's a right call to require that soundproofing for those families, because that's what it's going to be in apartments. It's going to be families.
Yep.
And small children and hardworking people that have to, you know, wake up early and work late or, you know, the workforce. I I don't think it's a hard ask personally.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't disagree, but in, but I do, I guess, the the, what I, all I want to come across is if we're trying to hit, you know, a a a price point, a range of affordability, and I hate using that, anything you add, and it might also be my inexperience, because I don't know what those materials cost. But my guess is when it comes to exterior sheathing and things like that, it's dramatic. And so my my gut tells me that that is not going to be an insignificant cost. And as a result, you have higher rent. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out the balance, you know? And somebody having a place to rent where we attenuated a bulk of the noise with us, with this berm in front of it. And there, yes, there's still, you know, the the train blows the whistle there, but we have, we have so many places in the city and the county that have this issue.
Well, we did approve or recommend Milltown Place south, and the requirement was for them to have the soundproof to move forward.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah.
Amy, if I, memory serves. Yes.
Well, and the other, yeah, I guess all I would say is that it's not lost on me. But it it adds, it's going to add significant cost, which translates to the rent. So it's just, it's just what it, it's just what it is. I would hope to, being in this community, that at some point, and maybe it's wishful thinking, that that would be a quiet crossing someday. I mean, that would be so nice. And it from, just from the standpoint of where it is. So then you're talking about just wasted materials and because, because it now is a quiet crossing. I don't have a crystal ball, neither do you, to know if that will ever happen, but that.
Decades.
It could be, it could be.
A lot of families living in there, going through, cycling through.
Right, right. I, and I, I definitely appreciate the the comment.
I have a question about the, going back to the commercial retail opportunity. Did you do any kind of feasibility study to back up that stance? Or was that just based on how you feel about the proximity to downtown or to like the super one area or further north?
I felt like, well, to answer your question, there, no feasibility study. It's just the, the, you need street frontage. So really, the only place would have been where that, that buil- building is sitting along Boyer there. And because of the topography and the way that it's engineered for storm, you know, at that line, basically, that's on the TV screen there, the southern half of that, the, the, the ground falls off so much, so it just would be, it'd just be extremely cost prohibitive to do it. And you wouldn't have the road frontage, so we just, I thought it's not close enough to the downtown core, which also is a reason to have some, some of that amenity. But there, as Amy mentioned, there's, there's, there's other examples of all residential P U Ds. So I didn't think it was, you know, that out of bounds to have that, have that not be a component. There is a a mixed use component that that's a mi- mini storage for the apartment folks. And then, like I said, that building there, you know, could have a small exercise facility, a a little coffee shop. It just, you know, who's going to rent that with that kind of, you can't see it in that, you know, right, where it's positioned. So in order to get, in order to fit, you know, your density in there with your apartments and be efficient with the buildings and the placement of them, I kind of had to use that corner, if that makes sense, of Ebbet and Boyer, and give it its most appropriate streetscape in terms of height, projection, and moving towards the the townhomes that are just to the north.
Did the building on the southwest corner, did that location lend itself to be a noise barrier for the rest of the development?
It it could be. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I actually didn't think about that. I guess that was that what you're asking, but I didn't even think about that. It could be.
So you mentioned mixed use and I could be wrong, but I, and this is a little bit of a comment on my, I mean, I don't want to share my opinion too much, but the mixed use topic could, could open the door to, and I believe in a P U D, the mixed use component is possible. I mean, if the, if commercial retail and residential is possible, it should be. But I, like I said, I don't want to use too much opinion here, but the captive audience factor of how many people are going to be residing here to me helps the the, the idea that a retailer, a commercial component could help a lot of things like people leaving this development to go downtown, which adds a, a traffic concern. And also the fact that there is a storage area, which hopefully I'm making this into a question. So bear with me, but and I'm not like downplaying the amount of effort put into this because it is extraordinary. And I just bring it up because if I I feel like there is there is a significant opportunity and I do understand that, yeah, that is a different component that from what I've gathered, it is not in your, your wheelhouse as far as, you know, what your focus wants us to be and unknowns, which are risks. So I understand. So I I think the number on the open space area is around ten thousand square feet. And do you think that's attainable to make an open space, to add ten thousand square feet to the to the, to this project?
You're talking about the, kind of in the middle there on the south end where that red building is?
I think to me, it doesn't really matter where it is.
Yeah, no, I I guess to answer, I'm not sure if it's ten thousand square feet, but there's certainly room to move that garage or eliminate it, you know, so making that children's park a little bit bigger and then add some open space right there by that, that proposed, you know, apartment amenity building that's in red there. So that could be eliminated to to be open space, I guess, is what I'm saying. And and back to your, you know, mixed use, that it's a, it really, you know, you certainly can ask for that, but I give. And and back to your, you know, mixed use that it's a it really, you know, you certainly can ask for that, but I'll give you an example, you know. You you have that within walking distance of this project, which was approved. Just what is it? North of Super One, you're going to have that exactly what you're talking about, that mixed use product. And there's a zone, well, it's the commercial zone that allows you to do multifamily, but you have ground floor, commercial. And so we're asking for for just multifamily zoning, which is more consistent with the comp plan, and that's why it's all residential.
So you don't see that the comp plan is is offering those opportunities as an emphasis because I feel like the comp plan does open the door and does offer, like, let's look at those opportunities to keep a neighborhood in its own neighborhood. So it's not traveling far away, congesting the rest of the city streets. You know, neighborhood convenience store type stuff. Maybe not like tire shops or, you know, stuff like that, but, you know, services that that support the people that are within walking distance or, you know, a short drive. I feel like the comp plan does have an emphasis on that. So that's that's why I'm bringing this up is, I mean, the asked, I mean, what's the ballpark figure of how many people are going to be living here? You know?
Give you that answer.
Okay, let me.
Leathen studies said it's 2.23 per living per the dwelling unit. So at 227, it's about 506 people, point two one.
So it's not a lot, it's not like a thousand people, but.
Yeah.
Potential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm back to, I think that's why we 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 proposed that red building there was to have that component if it was felt that that was, it's not my wheelhouse, wasn't my intent. And I also feel like you have that just south in the the CUP that was approved for that apartment complex that has ground for commercial and that that's commercial zoned. But to your point, it there's context area, I think, three, that has a residential commercial, which is which is why we actually this is that's that's some of the dialogue we had with city staff and it's why that apartment amenity building is there. So I guess really it comes down to what's more important? Do we do we want more open space? And and it's residential or do we want to add some of that commercial? Because that's where you would create the open spaces, right where that little neighborhood commercial would reside.
So what was the, what was your thought on the storage area? It's for that community only or is it?
Yes, yeah, it, yeah, my thought is living in apartments, it's, you know, it's cramped for storage. We we have on the plan some storage for units that face the thoroughfares through the building that go to the the stairways. But there are other units that are left out of that. So having that small little mini storage capability is just a, is just a nice a nice feature. And there's, that's not really a good building zone down there because it falls off so much. So for for a multi-story building or commercial building or something like that, storage units would be fine. But yeah, we just didn't have adequate enough storage, I felt, for the apartment units. And that was an easy way to fill that spot and supplement it.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I? Can I ask a question on this? There's this little kind of drive in and roundabout in between these two apartment buildings. It seems like it might be an opportunity to just have that big green space and move that entrance into the parking lot as you enter on a Ebbett Way. Did you guys look at that at all? See what that flow would be and the opportunity to?
So the circle drive in between the apartment buildings there?
Right. I mean, this is, this is roadway space, right?
Yeah, yeah. So just just eliminate the circle piece.
Make that green space and then have the driveway entrance into that first parking lot there as you're coming off of Ebbett Way. The the first parking lot to the right.
Yeah.
Traffic.
When we met with Derek early on, one was not having the drive the entrance to the parking, we wanted as far from Ebbett
Yeah.
or from Boyer as possible. But we need two for fire code. So we need two access points. So that's how we ended up with the middle and then the one to the right, which at one point we talked about, it just being a fire access.
Right.
So it could actually be gated, not a true entrance, but that we needed those two access points for fire.
Yeah, yet in short, Ben, like the, we did have some different alignments, but it, you don't want to put that traffic so close and then being able to get on the boyer and people turning into the development. So that's why that entrance is further back. But but there could be less, you know, asphalt by just eliminating that. The idea was just to have kind of a dedicated entrance that was nice looking. But that could be. I think it's a, I think it's a feature of the entrance there and it's a lot nicer than you see most of the time. So and the way it will be landscaped will be appealing, but that's why it's positioned back to Amy's point is for traffic and fire reasons.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, back to the storage units, are they going to be part of the rent for the smaller apartments? Are they going to be just rented separately to first come, first serve? Or how how are you?
The idea would be it's additional, you know, cost, but it would be available to the apartment residents first.
Okay.
Yep.
And how many units are there?
I I actually forget.
I can't see that small.
Do you know if it's up your head, Amy? I don't actually. It's it's not very many. It's it's it's
Sixty?
Maybe sixty. I was going to say sixties. It's not a, it's not a huge mini storage complex by any stretch of the means.
What are the size of those units?
I think that they were eight by ten, I think it was. If memory served me.
Mr. Chair, to the development north of Ebbett and west of Herring. The is the intent for most of these building occupants to park in their garages? Because those are all garaged, right?
Just, okay, orient me one more time, sorry.
So the yellow, in the yellow.
Okay.
All of those have garages.
That's correct, the townhomes.
The townhome, sorry.
Yep, they do.
So that's the intent to have them parked there because I was just, you know, reading through that or counting through the spots.
Yeah, the little like arrow almost on the one side of each one of those, if you can make that out, those are the garage ends. So like on Boyer, the garages are on the, they all load from the internal alleyways. They don't load from the street.
Exactly. I I knew that part, but I just wanted to make sure because there's certainly not enough spots to serve them. So I'm clear on that. Somebody had mentioned earlier on page four, the quiet crossing. So there's discussion in there about the city's multimodal transfer, transportation plan has quite crossing study going. Don't you think it'd be an opportune time to push up on that? For the development?
Sorry, opportune time for what?
To push the quiet crossing initiative.
I believe doing, I mean, you have to go through a whole study process and we have to study all of our crossings. I think it'll happen sooner than later, but there is no guarantee that Boyer will be the black crossing and how soon that will happen.
All right, that's it for me. Any more questions? Okay, if there's no additional questions, I will now recite the hearing rules and procedure.
If there's nobody here for the hearing at first.
Yeah. Is there anybody here?
We've got two virtual members on Zoom. Have they indicated whether they wish to speak? If you wish to speak on Zoom, will you please raise your hand at this time? Again, if you wish to speak on Zoom, will you please raise your hand on Zoom at this time? We do have one hand raised on Zoom to speak during the public hearing.
Can we ask if they're in favor, neutral, or? There we go.
We'll just read the whole.
There's three pages.
Let's just open it up for that person.
Okay, I'll try to make this brief or uh, well, I'm going to read the first paragraph. Yeah. Like everybody, please note that as provided in the notice of public hearing and as stated within the meeting packet posted on the city website, all written comments are to be delivered to the city clerk. Those comments that were received by way of that stated procedure were either included in the meeting packet or if received in time prior to the meeting, were forwarded to the commissioners. This process must be followed to ensure comments are properly included in the permanent hearing record. I would also ask to like, I would also, I would like to ask for your attention at this time. Please, as I recite, recite the standards for public testimony during this evening's public hearing. Testimony shall be directly addressed, direct, shall directly address the subject at hand. Testimony shall not be personally derogatory towards any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities are for comment only. Do not direct any questions to the commission or to staff. In the interest of time, testimony shall not be repetitious and each speaker is allotted no more than three minutes. If your testimony fails to comply with these standards, it may be declared out of order and you may be asked to cease. Uh, nobody's here. For those participating on Zoom, when your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be here heard. The clerk will now lower all hands on Zoom in order to take testimony in the order previously stated, which which was previously stated. I'm not going to go back on that. If you wish to speak in favor or neutral or in opposition, we'll make a call for each, then you may raise your hand at that time. For the, for those on Zoom participating remotely, if you wish to testify in favor of this request, please raise your hand at this time.
Mr. Chair, we do not have an individual on Zoom raising their hand to testify in favor.
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak? Neutral, okay, so it's in favor twice, sorry. Anyone to speak neutral to this proposal?
Yes, we do have participant on Zoom who would like to testify as neutral.
Please proceed.
Could please state your name and whether you live within San Point City limits, please, and then you may begin.
Yeah, my name is Robert Osborne. I do live nearby the the project in the city limits. I have a concern based on the origination of this project. And I understand that the project's been split now into three separate projects. However, when we approved this, the dialogue really was nothing remotely similar to what we're ending up with. Reading through it, you know, an explicitly green community would historical agricultural use of the property through the development of a large centralized community garden and through production, protection of a wildlife corridor and sensitive riparian lands along Sand Creek. University Park will be a sustainable community at all levels of design, focusing on opportunities for food production and incorporating generous day-long solar exposure. Anyway, this 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 kind of dialogue goes on and on and the result of what we have so far is nothing extraordinary. We have a row of six houses on Mountain View Drive that have no opportunity, as I can see, for anybody to even grow a strawberry plant, let alone sustainable community of food production. So I don't I guess that's one of my concerns is none of, none of these things that have been promised have come to fruition. The riparian corridor has been cleared with heavy equipment slash piles. We all witnessed that last year when I asked the developer about that. He said it's his property. He'll do that what he wants. That didn't set well. So now he's got his view corridors, but we don't have any animals left. We need to make sure that there's some methodology of holding these promises accountable. And I I just pass that on to you. Very frustrated with the fact that the council approved the project after the commission turned it down twice with no changes forthcoming. And I just see this as almost a waste of time if the council is going to make this decision for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else participating online who would like to speak in neutral to this project?
Mr. Chairman, now there's no one else raising their hand.
Is there anybody participating on Zoom or remotely who would like to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, no, there is no one who would like to speak in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you. Do any commissioners, oh wait. Do do commissioners have any additional questions at this time?
I do for Sam. So you need to get an opportunity to rebut anything that he heard in public hearing first.
That is point of order that is listed after this. Okay. Okay, would the applicant like to offer rebuttal to the to the public testimony? So commissioners, opportunity for any more questions?
The final questions for the applicant before you close the hearing.
Who writes this?
You ask city staff after you close the hearing. So you give the applicant, you ask the applicant any questions, last questions you have now, then close the. That's in order. I read it in order.
Must have a different paper than me. Okay, would the applicant like to offer anymore?
It's just if you guys have questions.
If we have questions for the applicant.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Okay, public hearing is now closed. All right, you guys are killing me. At this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. Do commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? I don't know if you changed your name. Amy. In regards to the duplexes in the townhomes, is there a concern or strike that word? Do you have any observations about what type of precedent this sets for further development in the city with the amount of one surface being presented specifically for the duplex? Height and then the townhome concept. Can you give any thoughts? Observations as this is a PUD, so that's, I mean, it's its own separate beastie.
Right. I again, the request is for the deviations. They are stating that the way they have They are stating that the way they have designed the site, they need waivers from that 50% garage door frontage and the front entrances. Those are standards in the residential districts with the stated intent of creating more of a pedestrian feel and having eyes on the street. They have addressed that to a degree by not having the garage sticking out in front of the house. The, the building wall actually includes the garage doors, but that, the commission needs to be aware that that is a deviation. The applicant has made his case for why he believes that's a good design, uh, but it is the commission's determination whether in this situation, in a PUD, whether that is something you feel is warranted. Again, because it provides a certain streetscape that would not be allowed under current code. In terms of the townhouse height, I do not have a concern with the requested 45-foot height for those buildings.
Thank you.
Yes. So Amy, it is completely within our purview to ask them if we deny this, to ask them just to go back to the drawing board?
You'd have to make very specific findings.
Okay.
What you do is you make a motion, recommendation to counsel to deny it.
With very specific. Okay.
You're not the final decision maker.
Right, 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 right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So any two, to the points were made during the public comment period, is there any prior conditions of approval that were outlined within the prior approval for this residential development that need to carry forward?
No, that was a different development and the first phases were a residential subdivision in a single-family district and they followed the single-family district standards. And the area of discussion of the open space is in those earlier phases. Those properties are not part of this
Okay.
phase of the development or the, what was the preliminary plan?
Alright, thanks for clarifying.
Any more questions? Any comments, thoughts, deliberative statements?
We get three minutes.
I think I've exceeded my three minute limit. Personally, I mean, I would like to see more green space, more park space. I have a concern with children living throughout, having to go farther than they need to. I guess the green space along the berm is concerning. You know, amount of dirt is not gonna keep any child away from the railroad tracks. That, that's just not a realistic. I also do agree with the soundproofing product that will make these families, these, these people's lives a lot better if we do go that route to approve. But the connectivity as well, I'd like to see that more specifically outlined and and a lot more green space personally is, is what I'm gonna circle back to.
Can, can we put some brackets on what we mean by a lot more green space?
Well, just to expand the children's park, which I, from what I gather, they're willing to do. You know, it's, I, I look at this and I see a lot of pavement, a lot of parking. So it'd be nice to eliminate some of that to accommodate, you know, more family activity, gathering areas, especially amongst the apartments. You know, it's, it's nice that it's incorporated in between the townhomes, but you know, the apartments is, is where it's seriously lacking any kind of community space. Is that, is that?
I, I mean, I agree with you. I'm just trying to like, how can we give them something objective to go back and meet, right? Like is it, is it 10,000 square feet? Is it 20,000 square feet? Is it a certain percentage? Like, how can we give them something like targeted to go back to, to say, please design to meet X requirement?
Well, there's a 10% require, what's the requirement, Amy, again?
The minimum is 10%, and they're at about 8.2, not including the walkways and things within the townhomes.
Amy, do we have a definition of what the open space term means in the PUD?
There is, and it is supposed to be usable open space that is not drainage areas, so it can't be stormwater.
So would I be wrong to think that a sidewalk is part of a mobility structure like a street? So we wouldn't consider that to be necessarily an open space that's like, even though it is open, so is, so is a yard, which is not included in an open space. That's my thought on it anyway.
So is the area in, oh, pardon me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Amy, so the area that's between the townhomes, it sounds like there may be a discrepancy between the applicant's question or his presentation. Is that, was that counted by the city as part of the 10% or is it not?
No, what, what the applicant, so originally when, when they submitted and they created that percent of open space and they said they were at 30%, they were including all of these areas between the townhomes. Yeah, anything that was green was counted except for the private yards. Then when I asked for more detail, um, the parks, because they really weren't detail what, because the open space is usable, it's not drainage area. So these are more the open space areas, which are these four identified areas. So are these areas open? Yes. But when you're looking at particularly this, this area through here, these are 45-foot buildings and this is maybe 30 feet between the 45-foot building. So I, I think to Mr. Chairman's point that, that gets into the connectivity and the pedestrian pathways. But I think the usable open space is more these four areas.
Oh, the point is that the connectivity pathways are maybe a separate component that is a, is a very big positive because it meets the multi-mobility aspect in a pretty nice way. But but there's no, there's no emphasis on a number for that, right?
Right.
So and is that, does that have to be a part of a PUD? Does the multi-mobility or the, you know, the pathway structure, does that have to be a part of a PUD?
Yeah, I believe that was one of the, addressing the multimodal plan.
Okay.
And in the narrative clear that because narrative, the enhanced pedestrian bike orientation of this was, is clearly one of the selling points to the commission for a planned unit development.
Okay, so we're gonna say open spaces is dedicated to nothing but open area without any development? No sidewalk, no street, nobody's yard?
No parking lots, no storm.
No stormwater drain, no swales, just?
Well, there may be sidewalk through it. So for example, the Linnell Park clearly has sidewalk through it, but it's, it's not bordered on either side by 45-foot tall buildings.
Okay.
You don't back to square footage of the sidewalk out of the 18,003.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. If I may, so if I was, if a commissioner was to put forward as a potential condition, would this, would you tell me if it's in violation of anything? A minimum of 10% open space to be included in the master development agreement? Would that be compliant and inappropriate?
That's going to be required anyways.
So we, we're gonna go above the 8.4 as currently present. So it's already in there. So they're gonna, we're going to have to get 1.6 more percent.
So.
So if we're at 8.6 now, it doesn't really, we've got to meet come.
The requirement is gonna be before, if, if you were to have a motion to
Perfect.
You're gonna have to get counsel with intent, but being able to prove 10% of this.
Thank you.
So either way, they're gonna have to come back with an updated plan that shows them.
And, and that's a condition of a, a recommended condition of approval that they, before it goes to the development agreement, we have more detailed open space areas and that it will meet at least the 10% minimum requirement.
With the focus on that green space being in the apartment area is what I'm hearing.
Well, if it's in the neighborhood park, then
Yes.
it could be done in one shot. Because by my figures, it's 10,000 square feet. So that would easily be able to fit there and I, I don't think it would affect the covered parking area by a whole lot, really. They would look the same when it's over. Um, I have a, the, the soundproof requirement, is that part of code? Because of the proximity to the crossings or?
It is not part of code.
I know I should know this, but previous applicants have had to adhere to that. And that was just a condition of approval because it was more appealing or?
Because of the proximity to the rail. So Mill, Milltown is also adjacent to red corridor and that was a requirement for that initial use permit.
And is that any kind of national standard or anything like that? Is, how was that come up with?
That was recommendation of the building official.
Okay. And as far as height, I feel like other applicants have been at or near this height as far as like a four-story height. So we, we already have a precedent set with, with that. Am I wrong?
You're not wrong. Milltown was four stories.
Yeah. And then, so it's really close to the same height.
Correct.
Okay. As far as the zero setback on some of these structures that are by the map, it looks like they're on the street, on, on the, in inner streets. So that's a PUD factor, right? We can go to zero on that and that's a common practice. I, I don't know for other ones I remember without the commercial component of them being that close. Is that? I don't know where I'm going with this.
Correct. Uh, other than in the commercial districts, you can build a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Another point towards commercial being viable here. I'm gonna just beat that horse just forever. I'm sorry. Um, I just have some comments to make. I, I, uh, my feeling on the project is very favorable. Number one, because the factor of just adding the, if these units were available right now, I think it may be a pretty big amount to put on the market in a short amount of time, but I have a feeling it's gonna take some time to make happen. So you know, the affordability factor will probably be market like, like you stated and and I think, you know, this may not be for everybody, but this will fill some need at some level for a lot of people. And I really like that. I do believe, and I've said this a lot of times before, apartments are the closest thing to affordable housing that we have. And brand-new apartments are a pretty nice way to do that. So I do really like that. On, on another level, I do have, you know, some, I mean, I've grown up here and, you know, that property sat there and I know a lot of people have strong feelings about, you know, what it was and what it was supposed to be and and I share some of those, but at the same time, you know, we have this balance to, as a city and as development goes, we need to be able to offer you know, the land that is in our city limits needs to be available for people to live. And some of the, some of the functions of being in a city don't involve agriculture, in my opinion. Even though in some ways that can still happen. So I believe the property has transitioned into an area where it's more suited for people to live than it is for other purposes. And fact of the existence of humans is we're heading in that direction and affordability and proximity of places for people to live is, is a big priority. So I'm, it's, it's a big reason why I'm in favor. I think it looks like a really nice project. Which does help my opinion by quite a big factor because if it did look like some other projects that I've seen in the very near neighborhood, I'm not in favor of fences on Boyer. I'm not in favor of, um, you know, things that that in my opinion don't look good. I think that will be a big factor in what the public thinks about this. And I think you guys have done a good job of, of making that happen. I think people are maybe initially gonna be opposed to it when they hear about it, but I think once it's built, I think it's gonna be an opposite reaction. So um, that's a good work. Thank you.
You go. Okay. Um, I too, I, I agree with the fact that we do need more of this type of housing in town. That's signs of the times. We are in desperate need. Unfortunately, I just don't, I mean, I, I love the, the townhome area. I see a lot more green. That apartment complex area is just so stare, looks so sterile to me. You know, but that's just aesthetics and common sense tells me, yes, it's, we don't need, we're not in that farming community. Um, especially there when you have those apartments and then you have Milltown going in and then there's Culver Crossing going in. But I just personally would have liked to see a little more, you know, you know, I'm gonna be green space to death, but I think for families, for small families and for young families, I think that should have been taken more and to get a consideration than parking spaces. And or storage units personally, but there is no doubt that this is needed and everybody is talking about getting that afford, if it is truly affordable, which I hope it does. Or is, or whatever is decided. So that's, that's my two cents. I would have really wished more thought was put into the apartment complex area for small families with children that like to be outside and run around to accommodate their needs rather than having to go anywhere else to play at a park. That's it.
As, Mr. Chairman, um, can I ask them a question?
No.
I can't. I don't want to reopen the hearing. But you know, I questioned whether the storage should even be there. Um, you know, there's a lot of storage, but I'm sure that there's a financial reason behind it that I might have to ask themselves when they're redrafting some of the green space to get it up to 10%. Maybe even some of the parking across the bottom edge of the apartments could be filled in and down that side to expand that a little bit. Maybe the storage can be shrunk, but ultimately, um, it's not my decision, but I do question whether it's necessary in an environment where we have a lot of storage. I just don't know the numbers and the demographics of the need.
I'll just piggyback on that comment. I, I, I think that is a balance, but I, I do think that those storage units will probably be in very hot demand. do think that those storage units will probably be in very hot demand for that demographic. Living in a small, um, apartment area and you want to have your mountain bike or your kayak or your skis, getting them in your apartment is probably not a viable thing. So I bet those will be very hot commodities and if you take that away from this development, I think that, um, the people who live in those apartments would be impacted.
Yeah, they could be.
That's a good point.
Yep.
But I do agree, more green space that's dedicated, support those families who live there, I think there's other things that can be done with the site development plan, there's that parking right next to the, um, the red building there for whatever you so potentially has a tendency that could be maybe developed into another park area, I, I just think that there's opportunities and I'm sure that they'll go back and they'll look at that and, and figure out a good plan.
You know, maybe the red building could move down to the east corner. I don't know if that's feasible, but.
Yeah.
Speaking of those conditions, the applicant has agreed to number one and two from page nineteen of the staff report. Yeah. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion when deliberation is concluded.
If we're wrapped up on the deliberation, I'd offer that opportunity right now. Or I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a motion first on the rezone. I move after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the Sandpoint City Council approve the request by M&amp;W Holdings LLC to rezone the property known as RPS three nine three six zero zero one zero zero two A A from, uh, RS residential single family to RM residential multiple family based on the following findings. One, the proposed zone change is in compliance with the future land use map and other policies within the comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed RM zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land vicinity of the site. Three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the planning jurisdiction. Four, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho Code sixty seven, six five one one and Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine.
And a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Commissioner Pluto?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Umat?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, if we can move on, we could, uh, I would entertain a motion on the PUD final development plan request.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho and Sandpoint City Code, recommend the Sandpoint City Council approve of the request by M&amp;W Holdings LLC for a planned unit development, final development plan for University Place Phase Four, RPS three nine three six zero zero one zero zero two A A with the staff report conditions one through fourteen and number fifteen being the extension of the linear parkway, linear park pathway, excuse me, located at the north end of the townhouse lots to fully extend from Herring Avenue through the linear park and connect with Boyer Avenue. And number sixteen, an expansion of the proposed eight thousand square foot open space at the corner of East Ebbett Way and Herring Avenue to allow for creation of a focal point neighborhood park through the elimination or relocation of the proposed garage and parking lot. This motion is based on findings provided through the submittal materials, staff report and testimony that with the above conditions, the application establishes that pursuant to ten dash three, there's ten H. Number one, the proposed development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. Two, each individual unit of the development as well as the total development can exist as an independent unit capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability or that adequate assurance will be provided that such objective will be attained. The uses proposed will not be detrimental to present, present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect which would not be achieved under standard zoning regulations. Three, the streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated multimodal traffic, that increased densities will not generate vehicular traffic in such amounts as to overload the street network outside the PUD and that any impacts have been adequately mitigated. Number four, any proposed commercial development can be justified at the locations present? But it is not, okay, thank you, pardon me. Uh, number five, any exception from standard zoning requirements is warranted by the design and other amenities incorporated in the final development plan in accordance with this chapter and the adopted policy of the city council. Six, the PUD is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Seven, the existing and proposed utility services are adequate for the population densities and non-residential uses proposed. And further, that staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to planned unit developments contained in Idaho Code sixty seven, six five one two and Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine.
Here we have a motion and we've added two, two conditions, so look for a second with those two conditions.
A second with conditions, the two conditions.
Roll call vote?
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pluto?
Yes.
Commissioner Umat?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
I would just hope that you really, you know, take what we said at heart and, and go back and make sure that, you know, we get some more green space there, um, but yes.
Motion passes. Um, finally, I would entertain a motion on the amended preliminary plat request. And hopefully there was a new commissioner that was like.
Oh, he's on a roll.
Oh, I'm, I'm willing to let Mr. Pluto just go to work. I'll sacrifice.
Initiation.
I move the Planning and Zoning Commission after consideration of the criteria and relevant standard of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, recommend the Sandpoint City Council approve the request by Eminem Holdings LLC to amend the preliminary plat for University Place Phase Four. The motion is based on the findings provided through the submittal material staff report and testimony that, one, the application is in substantial compliance with the subdivision zoning requirements in Sandpoint, Idaho, I'm sorry, Sandpoint City Code per the following jurisdiction, juris, justifications, the deviations from the subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements are allowed through the PUD approval process as stated in Title Ten, Chapter One, Section Six and Chapter Three. Two, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the overall planning goals and objectives outlined in the conference of plan. And three, the proposal was processed in compliance with the Sandpoint City Code nine dash nine dash five for hearing procedures.
I'll second.
I would, uh, move to amend that motion to be M&amp;W Holdings, not Eminem, if that makes any difference, that's all.
My mistake.
It is correct.
Okay. He can do that, okay.
Uh, I will amend that motion to M&amp;W Holdings.
Um, roll call vote?
Commissioner Amit?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Pluto?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I do have a point of order and early in the meeting, approval of meeting minutes, I stated June sixteenth and June twenty third, and that is not accurate. But that's what it's wrote, wrote down here, so I'll take some of the blame for that. Um, I believe it should be August sixteenth and August twenty third, so how do we proceed with that? Amend both of those motions? Okay, so. So, um, I would like to, I would entertain a motion to amend.
To, just to correct the previous vote.
Okay, a motion to correct both or one?
Well, if it's supposed to be both.
Okay. Both at the same time, okay. And entertain a motion to correct both meeting minutes to, to be from June sixteenth and June twenty third to August sixteenth and August twenty third.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Closed. All right, well, no further, no further business, the, before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at eight eleven about PM. Um, you can stop the handheld recordings.